Call the Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting March 15th. Order if I could, please. It is 7:00 PM. I'd ask everyone to all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Jeremy Alexander, your...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good and gracious God, I'd like to take this moment and this opportunity to thank you for all that you have given us. Every day in front of us is a gift. Every neighbor to our left is a gift. Every neighbor to our right is a gift. I want to take this moment to ask you to remind us to be thankful for every day that we have, for every opportunity that we have to serve, and for our neighbors. Lord, give us the strength today to do your work in this room and to be kind and gracious to all those that surround us. In your name I pray. Amen.
Do you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear.
Present.
Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Plesky.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Snell.
Here.
Chairman Shatwell.
Here.
All present.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any items for removal or additions to the agenda? Commissioner Bear.
We'll... Just so you know, we'll handle that when we get to the consent calendar, sir. I'll ask commissioners again for items and we'll remove them. Thank you, sir.
Approval of the agenda? You have that? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Awards and recognition. I know he's in the room. Former Commissioner David Elwell, could you please meet me at the podium, sir?
There are grandchildren here. There you go.
While I agree with you, I appreciate the hard work of fellow Commissioner Snell. I agree, no. Whereas David Elwell has held office for the Jackson County Board of Commissioners in District 9, formerly District 12, for 18 of the last 20 years. During his tenure as a county commissioner, David served as vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners. David also served on Affairs and Agencies Committee for all six years, as chairman, Public Safety and Transportation Committee for two years, as chair, Agencies Committee for three years, and Affairs Committee for three years. Whereas David also served on numerous Jackson County boards and continues to serve on them. David applied his many years of law enforcement experience to advocate for the 800 megahertz radio system. David also was instrumental in advocating for the installation of safety improvements at Rives Junction and Van Horn Road. David is a strong proponent to ensure adequate funding was allocated for animal control, and now therefore be it resolved that Jackson County Board of Commissioners expressed its sincere appreciation to David Elwell's contributions and wishes him much success in his future endeavors. Entertain a motion, please?
I'll move.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear.
Yes.
Commissioner Walls.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham.
Yes.
Commissioner Plesky.
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Snell.
Yes.
And Chairman Shatwell.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Congratulations. Three years of service and guidance.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you.
Did Commissioner Elwell want to have any words at all?
Thank you for recognizing me, and I miss you all. Thought it was a good word.
Any communications or petitions to come before the board? I see some stuff was waiting for us at our desk. Any other items? Special orders or public hearings? You have none at this time? You've arrived at public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. This is the first opportunity for public comment.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Laura. I don't know if you knew my address. I live at 9320 Ben Road. I'm in Commissioner Bear's district. I'm asking you to address specifically the SESCE ordinance. I know that it's coming up tonight for some discussion. I'm not sure that I understand why there's no discussion being had on why we're not expanding that a little bit. Right now, it's a pretty easy ordinance to work around. It's not really achieving its goal, and a very small change to it would address some of that. So I'm hoping that you will consider that a little further. I understand we don't want to grow government any bigger than we need it to be, but if we're not achieving the outcome of the ordinance as it is now, and it's pretty darn easy to work around it, we probably need to look at it a little bit more. So I'm asking every one of the commissioners to please consider Commissioner Bear's comments on this matter. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marcy Jankovic from Summit Township, and I am here to agree with Commissioner Bear and with Brenda. I used to live on Brown Street, North Brown Street, right across the street from when it was Westwood Mall and there was a Montgomery Ward, and then after that Walmart. And I used to see those huge mounds of snow build up and all of the dirt and debris and so forth that accumulated there. And I also used to see what happened in the catch patients. So I would like to see the commission address this. I think we need to be good stewards. I understand that we need to also consider costs for people who are putting in new facilities or addressing an old one when an ordinance is passed, but I would appreciate your consideration. This is just good stewardship. Thank you.
My name is Heather McDougall. I live in Grasslake Township, and I am here also because I'd like more information on the same topic. We live in the winter and water wonderland, and we have a responsibility to take care of the wonderful water that we have been granted. And if this is a simple fix, by golly, we ought to have a conversation about this. I understand that there might be costs involved, and we ought to have a conversation about that, too, but for all practical purposes, this needs to be discussed openly. Thank you.
Scott Ogney, Leoni Township, bear with me. I've been battling losing my voice. How dare you pledge allegiance to this flag? Some of you may know, I've been investigating the general election of 2020, and I have uncovered significant crimes, significant lawbreaking, from the highest offices of the state of Michigan to the county clerk's office to the Leoni Township offices. A lot of people gave up their lives for this country. I have lost faith in my country after witnessing the kind of lawbreaking that has gone on in this election. I've gone to bed in tears, and the reason I stuck it out is because of all the people that gave up their lives for this country. But I see a lot of spineless wimps here this evening. That includes a spineless wimp sheriff wherever he's at.
Please address the board.
Pardon?
Please address the board, sir.
I tell you what, you have some sheets in front of you, and I ran an election report history on each one of you. There's evidence of wire fraud on each one of yours, and it has to do with the timestamp. You guys want more details, I'll be more than happy to address it in the second part. Online, which you have a copy of as well, there's evidence of two circumstances of wire fraud, and it has to do with the fact that I did not vote in Leoni Township this whole period. I haven't voted there since 2017. Prior to that, I voted in Summit Township. But the data in the qualified voter files at the Michigan Bureau of Elections is so messed up. Commissioner Kennedy and Commissioner Snell have a copy, as well as the county clerk, of a FOIA I have submitted to Leoni Township. I'm waiting to have it fulfilled. It has significant evidence of crime breaking and quite possibly either the county clerk's office and certainly Leoni Township offices that eventually leads to the Michigan Bureau of Elections and the Michigan Secretary of State office. For the county clerk, there are two reports. An election summary report, which is from Jackson County, the official results, the ballots cast was 81,350. The qualified voter file says 80,536. That is a difference of 814. So how does that happen? I know how it happens because we've been investigating this, but I don't think the county clerk understands this. Is my time up? This election, your vote doesn't mean a thing. I don't think the county clerk has the guts to do any investigation on her own because she does what she's told. Adolf Hitler came to power through clerks that do what they're told instead of what the law says. There's a difference. And I tell you what, you, the county commissioners...
Time is up now, Scott. Thank you.
10 years ago next month, I had a house fire. After that, my insurance company put me up in a rental house for a while. As we looked at different houses to find one that was acceptable for us to live in for six months, one of the houses that I got shown had deadbolts on the doors with key locks from the inside, and I was horrified. I had just had a house fire. To imagine having another fire and to go to a door and not be able to get out a door because it was locked was horrifying to me. I asked the person who I would have been renting from, "Why on earth would you do this?" And they said, "Well, because the previous tenants were concerned about break-ins and a home invasion." And so for them, that because there was glass next to the door, so for them, it made perfect sense to avoid a home invasion or burglary, easy to bash out that glass and reach in and unlock the door. So for them, that made a lot of sense. So if a bunch of community members came to you and said, "There's a community going in where every one of the model homes has glass next to the front door, and we want to make a statute that says that you have to have a key inside to eliminate the possibility of home break-ins," I would, as stewards of the community safety, I would expect you to listen to those concerns. But as stewards of the community safety, I would also expect you to reach out to experts and ask the experts, "What is more likely? Are you more likely to have a fire in your home, or are you more likely to be subject to an attempted break-in, a home invasion?" After consulting the experts, you would find that the bigger risk is a fire. And so at that information, you know, simple change, you, instead of going to deadbolts, you put, you know, bars on the window so somebody can't punch through. So what I'm requesting this commission do is when community members come to you with a problem they see in their community, I absolutely want you to look at that problem and understand that it is a concern that your community has. But I also do not expect you to be swayed by loud voices in the community that really don't necessarily know what they're talking about. Until I looked it up, I didn't know what I was talking about regarding the safety of your front door. So please, I ask you, don't make a change to anything because a bunch of people stand at this podium and ask for a change to be made. Contact experts and find out... So the discussion that you should have isn't whether to make a change, it's what experts you should contact to get help in making those decisions. Thank you for your time.
So hi, my name is Kim Mulvahill. Nice to see you all tonight. I'm talking here to talk about, there has been a lot of talk, anti-vaccine talk, and talk about what to do with the health department and potentially petitioning the health department to put anti-vaccine information on their website. It is the health department's job to ensure public safety. They use people who have experience. They use people who have knowledge. They use people who are, have vast knowledge in the health field to determine what goes on their website and to provide health, safety, public safety information. I know that there are a number of people who are anti-vaccine, and great, don't get vaccines. As our health department, it is their job to ensure public safety, to respond to pandemics, which we, you know, have currently gone through, which is becoming an endemic, which is going to be pervasive in our society from here on out until we find a vaccine that will stop the virus from attacking all of us on a regular basis. We continue to have the flu vaccine to help reduce the deaths from flu. The COVID vaccine helps reduce deaths from COVID. It does not prevent you from receiving COVID. You can still get COVID, but it does reduce the likelihood that you will die from COVID. It is essential that our health department be able to function in the manner that it is designed to do, and in that manner, it also needs to be free from our own individual political beliefs and ideological beliefs. It needs to be performed through people with medical degrees who understand what is occurring in our society and what is occurring with each, with the public, and to ensure public safety. I know that a lot of people have very strong feelings about vaccines or not vaccines. I know people have a lot of very strong feelings about who's leading the government and who isn't leading the government. But really, it's up to the medical professionals to have vetted sources to provide us with that accurate, safe information. Encouraging the health department to put sites on there that aren't vetted medical sources is a harm to public safety. We need to make sure that our public remain well informed with vetted medical information that is not up to every Tom, Dick, and Harry. It's up to the people who do that, the CDC, the World Health Organization, Medicare, they all have professionals who do this every day. Thank you.
Could you pull... Thank you.
I will. Pierre Bormuth, 142 West Pearl Street. I want to talk about water as well, but a little differently. Consumers Energy, our very large public utility here in town, has applied to Eagle for two permits to withdraw water. They want to drill two wells and withdraw 2.7 million gallons of water a day out in Blackman Township by the Kinder Morgan plant. The reason for this is because the city raised their water rates and eliminated the tier system, and Consumers Energy believes that they cannot operate the plant anymore at those prices. So what that tells you is that water has become more valuable than the electricity that they produce. Okay? So given that reality, maybe the plant needs to close. But no, instead, we're going to go and Consumers Energy, this large public utility that charges all of us an extreme amount for electricity, is going to get their water, our public water, the public trust we have in our underground drinking water, for free. Now, I'm not pleased about that. There's a public comment period. It lasts for 30 days. It started March 10th. It's until April 10th. You can go online and you can make your comments about this possibility of consumers draining our underground supply water. And Leoni Township should be especially careful because most of Blackman, Summit, the city are municipal water. Leoni has wells. When you withdraw possibly 7.2 million gallons a day from the aquifer, somebody's wells are going to be diminished.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Brown from Summit Township. I wanted to talk about putting on the public health, letting them have an informed consent to the vaccines on the health department website. There's just as many doctors on the left side as there are the right side, but you don't hear about one of them. There's so much censorship going on in public media, and the CDC, the WHO, they're all... Fauci, where's Fauci? I haven't heard from him in a long time. Pfizer put up their nine pages of side effects, and they took it down and they got it off the stock market so people couldn't see it, and they're closing up shop because they're finding out that these vaccines aren't working, and they haven't worked, and they keep wanting to give you more. They are making these vaccines in 100 days when it takes five to 10 years to approve one. These vaccines are not FDA-approved. They never have been FDA-approved. I've worked in the health system for 15 years, and it's ridiculous how they push this vaccine to get everybody vaccinated when it's not even approved. Airline pilots can't even take a vaccine after, only after a year that it's been approved. So when the airlines told the pilots they had to be vaccinated, the ones that did get vaccinated are not even supposed to be flying right now. There's a lawsuit of them for them to, take them out of being able to fly because they are supposed to wait a year after it's approved by the FDA. That's all. Thank you.
My name is Helena from Jackson County. It is great to be here tonight. With so many issues facing us today, I cannot help to remind everyone that most of what we are seeing at this point, all goes back to the 2020 presidential election and the big steal through all these voting machines. I can assure you that I have done more than my research, and there is sufficient fact-based evidence available to those that are concerned. This proves this. Every single American should be concerned. Every single American should be demanding answers. Honestly, I don't know if we will even make it to the November 2020, 2022 midterm election at the pace, the destruction of America is going on right now. But if we do, and as still free people, may I ask, what are we doing about these voting machines? And do we have a plan to replace them? This should be of utmost importance. There are many, many people who have simply been selected, not elected, in the position of making decisions that do not in any way reflect the want and needs of the people. If I understand correctly, the commissioners play a big role in either all or part of the allocation of funds for these machines. So my question is, what are our plans going forward? We have to go back to the paper ballots, and yes, there is a solution. I will point you to FrankSpeech.com, and there you will find all the information you need under Fix the 2020 Election. Mike Lindell is one of the greatest patriots helping to save our country. I just know that you can and will be patriots as well. Thank you so much, commissioners, for your time. Thank you for helping us pave a way forward. May God continue to bless you.
I'm Stephanie Riley. I'm here from Jackson. I just wanted to point out that I do have a couple of friends that are at the convoy in DC, and one candidate that was from Texas is the only one that agreed to meet with them and discuss any issues other than, well, they did go to DC in the Congress, and Senator Johnson also did, but only Ted Cruz was the only person that went to where they were staying. And so to me, this is a big issue that so many people are being misled or not even supportive of the government. To me, that shows that one person standing up or even willing to hear them is, it's just incredible that nobody else is going down there to hear these people that are standing up for us and our freedoms. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we've arrived at item seven, a public safety and transportation committee meeting for confirmation of the chief magistrate, or magistrate, excuse me. Chairman Kennedy, I relinquish the meeting to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Burns, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, commissioners. I want to introduce to you Michael Kelly, an attorney in the Jackson area here. I'm going to turn it over to him very briefly, just to give a little bit of about him, and then I'll talk to you about my staff report.
Thank you, Jeremy. I'd first off to thank Mr. Burns, as well as the entire 12th District Court Administration for giving me this opportunity to serve Jackson County, where I am currently raising a family of three. After my 20 years of practice as an attorney here in Jackson, I'm looking forward to this new endeavor, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
So as you had before, before you heard state statute, the Board of Commissioners is to approve, has the opportunity or brought before the board to approve the appointment of the chief judge for a district court magistrate. The appointment from Chief Judge Goustery is Michael Kelly, and I'm requesting approval of that appointment.
My understanding is it's time-sensitive, as the current one is retiring, and the last day will be this month, 31st?
Correct. Yes, at the end of this month, and the start date for Mr. Kelly is, we're looking for April 4th.
And we don't meet again this month, so that's why it's...
Correct. Yep, thank you, sir.
Yep. Okay, so this, you have a question? Oh, committee member Duckham. Motion by Duckham. Do I have a second?
Forward.
It will be forwarded to the full board. That is supported by Commissioner Walls. Take a roll call vote, please. Take a roll call vote, please. Sure. Commissioner Baird.
Good evening. The report says that magistrates are limited in the scope of cases, case types they can preside over. I'm not familiar with that. Can you tell me what case types?
Yeah, yep. So initial arraignment, bond reviews, small claims court, landlord-tenant, wedding ceremonies. Those are the gist of the majority of the cases that a magistrate handles. Yes, informal, thank you, Mr. Bourne. Traffic offenses, informal hearings.
You good, Commissioner Baird? Okay. Any other questions from committee members? If not, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Baird?
Yes.
Commissioner Walls? Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Williams? Committee Chairman Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Kennedy? We're at item 8A. Approval of the minutes of the February 15th, 2022 meeting. Have a motion from Commissioner Duckham, support from Commissioner Williams. Questions to the minutes. Seeing or hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion? Have a motion in support. Commissioner Baird?
I would request that item 11A, Health Department Soil Erosion Sedimentation Control Ordinance be removed from the consent agenda.
So noted. We'll make consent item 11A, Standing Committee, Human Services, item 15B. So noted, Chairman Poleski?
Yes, sir, 15B, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other items for removal and consideration? Hearing none. Could you please post the vote, Madam Clerk? Just the consent agenda with the soil erosion removed, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Consent agenda is passed unanimously. Moving to Standing Committee reports. Public Safety Transportation, first item, chaired by Vice Chairman Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. The Community Corrections Advisory Board still has a communications media seat open. There are no applicants. I would encourage commissioners to reach out to individuals in communications or media to apply. That's all the business we have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee, General Government, chaired by Commissioner Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham? Can you pull your mic in, Phil?
Today we have the Agricultural Preservation Board coming up again. We have two current members, Andrew Alexander and elected official from government, County Governor Andrew Grimes. We have no applicants. We'll move on and have to re-advertise this. Second board, we have the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We have three public seats that are being advertised. These new terms will expire in three of 2025. Current members, Brad Brulinski. He has applied. He has been nominated by the committee. Second member, James Seitz. Mr. Seitz has applied. He has been recommended by committee. Third member is Mark Schopmeyer. He is an applicant and he has been recommended by the committee. We also have four other applicants. Mary Walcott, Rush Jennings, Brian Boyer, and Mark Owen. What's the pleasure of the board? I would like to nominate the first three.
Yes, sir. So we have three nominations from the floor to continue to serve. Is there any nominations from the floor? Mr. Kennedy?
I would nominate Brian Boyer.
Okay, commissioners, we have an additional nomination. So you have the three members who are on the committee and a nomination from the floor. Any other nominations from the floor? So with that in mind, we will follow the step-down procedure where one person will make it, two people will make it through and then one person will make it through and we'll keep going until we fill the three seats. Do you follow me? Okay. We have Brulinski, Seitz, Schopmeyer, and Brad Boyer. Correct? Brian Boyer, I apologize. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walls?
I couldn't hear you. No, you gotta, because we have a fourth that's been nominated, we have to go through, we're going to end up going through this three times. So you've got, we've got to select a person and then renominate and then select a person and then renominate and select a person. Okay?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Boyer.
Commissioner Duckham?
Boyer.
Commissioner Poleski?
Brulinski.
Commissioner Alexander?
Brulinski.
Commissioner Williams?
Brulinski.
Commissioner Snell? Commissioner Baird?
Boyer.
Chairman Chetwell?
Brulinski.
Brulinski is one. Commissioner Kennedy? No, no, sir. I'm sorry, I apologize. Commissioner Duckham?
I nominate Boyer.
Are you going to nominate all of them again? Or are you just going to nominate Mr. Boyer to fill one of the seats?
Just nominate Mr. Boyer.
Okay. Any nominations from the floor?
Nominate Seitz.
We have Seitz and Boyer up for nomination at this time. Any other nominations from the floor?
I nominate Schopmeyer.
Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Kennedy?
Boyer.
Commissioner Duckham?
Boyer.
Commissioner Poleski?
Seitz.
Commissioner Alexander?
Seitz.
Commissioner Williams?
Schopmeyer.
Commissioner Snell?
Seitz.
Commissioner Baird? Commissioner Walls? Chairman Chetwell?
Seitz.
Three, Boyer.
Five, Seitz.
Five, Seitz, correct.
Mr. Seitz is one. Commissioner Duckham?
I nominate Schopmeyer.
Any other nominations from the floor?
I would nominate Boyer.
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Duckham?
Schopmeyer.
Commissioner Poleski?
Schopmeyer.
Commissioner Alexander?
Schopmeyer.
Commissioner Williams?
Schopmeyer.
Commissioner Snell?
Schopmeyer.
Commissioner Baird?
Boyer.
Commissioner Walls? Commissioner Kennedy?
Boyer.
Chairman Chetwell?
Schopmeyer.
Seven, Chapman.
Mr. Brulinski, Mr. Seitz, and Mr. Schopmeyer have reached nomination and made it to the, returned to the Brownfield Authority. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one committee left. That'd be the Economic Development Corporation. Will be for a public seat. The term expires three of 2028. Phil Willis is a current member. Phil Willis was the applicant. Phil Willis was recommended by committee. We also have Mark Owen that has applied.
What is your nomination from committee, sir?
Phil Willis.
Thank you, sir. Any other nominations from the floor?
Nominate Mark Owen.
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Poleski?
Willis.
Commissioner Alexander?
Willis.
Commissioner Williams?
Willis.
Commissioner Snell?
Willis.
Commissioner Baird?
Owen.
Commissioner Walls? Commissioner Kennedy?
Owen.
Commissioner Duckham?
Willis.
Commissioner, Chairman Chetwell?
Willis.
Mr. Willis is returned to the Economic Development Corporation. Commissioner Duckham?
That will be all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee, Human Services, chaired by Commissioner Poleski. Commissioner Poleski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 11A is appointments under the purview of the Human Services Committee. The first council is the Department on Aging Advisory Council. There are two public seats open to appointment. Current members are Felicia Richmond and Tom McKinder. There have been no applicants, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, Mr. Poleski?
Thank you. Next board up for appointment is the openings on the Lifeways Board. There are two general public members with terms expiring March of 2025. Those current seats are held by John Clark and Christine Carlson. There were six applicants, including Clark and Carlson. And Clark and Carlson are the committee recommendation.
Any nominations from the floor?
I nominate Lisa Downey.
I'd like to nominate Brenda Nora.
Mr. Chair, is this for the Clark seat?
I believe it is, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, ma'am. Apologies.
No problem. Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Williams?
Clark.
Commissioner Snell? Commissioner Baird?
Nora.
Commissioner Walls? Commissioner Kennedy?
Downey.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Poleski? Chairman Chetwell?
Clark.
Six for Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark has received it. Second round is for Christine Carlson. Any other nominations from the floor?
Nomination, Brenda Nora.
Any other nominations?
Nominate Lisa Downey.
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Williams?
Carlson.
Commissioner Snell? Commissioner Baird?
Nora.
Mr. Walls? Mr. Kennedy?
Nora.
Mr. Duckham? Mr. Poleski? Mr. Alexander? Chairman Chetwell?
Carlson.
Seven, two.
Carlson has received the seat. Commissioner Poleski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next opening on the Lifeways Board is a primary consumer. The term expires March of 2025. Current member is Carl Rice Jr. He has applied and he is the committee recommendation.
Any public member that meets the requirements of primary consumer may be nominated. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
The next opening on the Lifeways Board is for a term expiring in March of 2025. It is a county commissioner seat. The current member is your humble servant, Earl Poleski. The applicant is Poleski and he is also the committee recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Any commissioners nominating themselves to serve on this committee? Or another commissioner? Come on, this is your chance, guys. Let's nominate somebody. Hearing none. All in favor of Commissioner Poleski continuing to serve? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Poleski.
Be careful what you wish for, Mr. Chair.
Correct.
The next item that is open is the Veterans Affairs Committee. There is a seat for a public member representing Vietnam veterans. The seat expires March of 2026. The incumbent is Richard Arnold. The applicant is Bill Tripp and he is the committee recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Any nominations from the floor that qualify? Hearing none, all please say aye in favor of Mr. Tripp?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
Mr. Chair, we move now to item 11B. The approval of the Soil and Sedimentation Control Ordinance as amended. And this comes forward with a committee recommendation for approval, Mr. Chair. Comes, I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Comes with a motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
We have support for the motion?
Comes from committee, Mr. Chair. Does it require a second?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Support?
We have a motion in support. Any conversation? Repeat, any conversation? Commissioner Baird?
So we are now at item 16B?
Yes, sir, 15B.
15B, okay. I move to amend the proposed Soil Erosion Sedimentation Control Ordinance 14 as follows. Amend Article Roman numeral 4A1 to read, "Earth Change Within 500 Feet of the Waters of the State or a Conduit Which Discharges to the Waters of the State." And amend Article Roman numeral 4A3 to read, "Earth Change Involving the Removal of Clay, Gravel, Soil, Pete, or Topsoil that is either one or more acres or within 500 feet of the Water's Edge of a Lake, Stream, or River, or a Conduit Which Discharges to the Waters of the State." of a lake, stream, or river, or a conduit which discharges to the waters of the state and access roads to and from removal site ancillary activities," and amend Article four A5 to read, "Earth change involving excavation for the purpose of creating ponds if they are: a) agricultural-zoned ponds greater than five acres and/or within 500 feet of a conduit which discharges to the waters of the state; and b) residential-zoned ponds that are greater than one acre and/or within 500 feet of waters of the state or a conduit which discharges to the waters of the state." I have some copies of that I can pass over to the clerk. She probably didn't write that down as fast as I read it. So if you guys pass around this, a couple copies, if some of you want to keep one. Make sure one gets to the clerk, please.
We have a motion on the floor. You know? I hear no support for this motion. We're moving on. We have a motion and support for the action that came out of committee. Any questions? Further questions to the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
We are stewards of our land and our waters, and the motion as presented by the Health Department, um, does not satisfy its, does not satisfy its own objectives. Article 1C2, uh, the article is "To Prevent Unnecessary Stripping of Vegetation and Loss of Soils in Projects That Have the Potential to Impair the Waters of the State of Michigan." Every bit of s, of sediment, sludge, dirt, garbage that goes down our sewers definitely has the potential of to impair the waters of the state. That is one of the stated objectives. I submit to you that that objective is not met in this ordinance. Um, this ordinance by the statement from the Health Department, under current situation A, "The Health Department has drafted and update Jackson County Ordinance Number 14 that reflects the current state-agency naming, definitions, grammar clarifications, and other minor edits." So all they did was they corrected agency names where it used to be DEQ, now it's Eagle. It used to be the County Road Commission, now it's the County Department of Transportation. Nothing in this ordinance improves the quality of the water we are dumping into the Grand River or other bodies of water. So I submit to you that they have failed to meet their own objec, objective. Um, the other objective, uh, "To provide for stricter," okay, this is objective Article 1C7, "To provide for stricter regulation of soil erosion and sedimentation control in the Jackson Count, in Jackson County that is provided for in the Act and the Rules as determined by the Board of Commissioners and the County of Jackson." So they state they want stricter regulations. They have not accomplished that. Nothing is stricter. In their own words, they, they corrected agency naming, definitions, and grammar. So this proposed ordinance will not improve anything whatsoever from the current situation. The amount of pollution we're dumping in the river now, we're going to continue dumping into the river after we update this ordinance. This is not satisfactory to me.
Any further comments? I'm, okay. Commissioner Williams.
Uh, thank you. Just one follow-up question, uh, to the red line addition of this ordinance. Has this been ran by Eagle at all?
That's correct. They've reviewed it and informed us that we are correct in what we are doing and are following the state statutes correctly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to go over the fact that, um, appreciate Commissioner Bear's input. Um, this has actually been debated, and this isn't the first time it's been talked about. I know some people in public comment tonight kind of indicated that, and that's simply not the case. Um, staff has gone through great lengths to look into Commissioner Bear's concerns, and as a matter of fact, some, some of his, uh, suggestions were brought forth, but I'm just going to simply read what the problems were with this specific motion. So in regards to Article 4, Section A1, "Though the ordinance can be changed to broaden the definition of waters of state, it does have consequences such as additional permitting and compliance tasks associated with a higher workload as described." In essence, that means more permits, more employees the county has to hire, and more fees that you good people get to pay. Secondly, when we go on to Article 4A3, and that's about the conduit to a lake or stream or river, adding this language would increase the number of sites requiring an SESC permit due to changing the definition of waters of the state to include many more water conduits. Jackson County Health Department can and does respond to complaints whether they are permitted or unpermitted sites, whether within 500 feet of state waters or less than one acre. All construction sites with disturbances are required to use best management practices to keep the soil on site. In regards to the amendment on Article 4, Subsection A5, "As per Eagle, SESC staff representative, an outlet to the waters of the state is not one of the criteria for needing a SESC permit." 500 feet to a waters of the state and one acre in size are criteria for residential-zone ponds. There is a specific pond exemption in Part 91 for agricultural-zone ponds that are less than five acres in size and do not result in the discharge of stormwater into the waters of the state. So I want everyone to be aware that staff, team of experts went through great lengths to take a look at Commissioner Bear's, uh, suggestions, and they, they found these issues with it. So his amendments are in direct conflict with our county administration, our county health department, and other agencies. So that's why I'm in favor of the staff proposal on the redraft and not Commissioner Bear's amendments. Just wanted to make that clear.
Commissioner Duckham.
I would like to know how much this is going to affect the cost of obtaining soil erosion permits, uh, by our citizens that, uh, now would be required to use them. I mean, uh, up to these standards, so there may be more people that have to use them, and what's the cost effect going to be?
Any other commissioner comments? Any other commissioner comments? You've, you've spoken twice, Mr. Bear, to the issue. You've spoken twi, no, sir, you spoke, you made an amendment, and then you gave your opinion. So you've spoken twice to the amendment, to the discussion here. We allow two conversations, sir. We're going to call the vote now.
Same rule? What rule says I can't make a third comment?
Same, uh, the-
Doesn't exist.
What's that? Yes, it does, sir.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does. We've operated under these rules since you came on the board, and you know that, and you told me to do it with other commissioners when they were trying to talk on-
Rule has been that you can't make a second or a third comment until other commissioners are given the opportunity to do so.
Two comments.
Once they have had that opportunity, then-
I'm going to call the vote. Madam Clerk, would you post the vote? Thank you.
Goddamn cheers.
Go ahead and post it. Ordinance passes 6-3.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, if I might, uh, take a, a point of privilege as the committee chair. Uh, tonight, during the consent calendar, not only did we agree to buy a bunch of meal trays for the senior services, we also appointed a health officer. And I would like, uh, the commissioners to, uh, uh, if we might introduce Kristen Pluta. She is here tonight, um, to commissioners and to the public. Uh, I, it looks like she's a, you don't, you don't need to, to, um, march, okay? Anyway, Kristen Pluta, our new health officer, and her husband, Alex, if I might introduce them to you.
And I would just like to say a quick thank you to, um, you know, I've been working with you all for over the past seven months. Um, so I, I appreciate that opportunity, and I appreciate the opportunity, you know, to, to be here today to, you know, formally take over as the health officer. Um, you know, and then the other, you know, only last little bit that I would say is that, you know, I jumped in with two feet, um, back in August, and I am, you know, proud to be a part of the Health Department and the people that are, you know, our, um, our friends, our neighbors, our, you know, community that are, you know, working there daily to, um, to promote public health in Jackson County, again, to all of our, um, you know, friends and family. So I look forward to it.
Mr. Chair, that concludes Human Services.
Scott Ogden, returning, uh, the conversation to the 2020 general election. Uh, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Kennedy, I gave you each copies of the FOIA. I'd like to see if either one of you, because the only cop that is investigating this for criminal action is the Director of Public Safety of Blackman Leoni Township. I'd like to see if either one of you reach out to him to say, hey, is there anything I can do on behalf of the board, or at least my position as a county commissioner? And, uh, I have a lot of other things I'd like to say, but Chairman Shatwell, you and Mr. Plesky and Mr. Snell have been here for a long time. You've been sitting in that chair for a long time. The county clerk has been sitting in this chair for a long time. You know what? You guys are no different than Democrats. You think you're entitled to be here in the positions. And I tell you what, I'd rather have a fresh face. And I just think you guys think you're entitled. Adolf Hitler would love you guys.
Perhaps you will recall that in another life, I was a paralegal, and I was a paralegal in the Jackson County Prosecutor's Office, and my concern tonight is the Wesley Street Jail. It's a mess. I think you've had opportunities to tour it, but there are Eighth Amendment violations in that jail. Not only, um, uh, are there sewage backups, but the pipes that break are, uh, soaked in asbestos. There are several multimillion-dollar inmates in the Department of Corrections because the state allowed those conditions to exist. This is a big lawsuit waiting to happen. I think it might even succeed or exceed Michigan municipal risk management limits, and I think we need to form a commission and address the problem right away. Um, I have some ideas, but I'm, I'm sure that we need to get started on it, and, uh, I hope each of you, if you haven't toured the jail, will take that tour and see how you would feel if you were the captain and the sewage pipe broken. All of that excrement fell on your head, because that's what happened. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sue McCollus. I'm a resident of Summit Township at 3350 Harbin Street. Um, I just wanted to comment a little bit on, um, something known as water funds. These have been established from the country of Colombia to the state of New York, and their purpose is to protect water at its source so that it when it gets to the place that it's going to be used, you have cleaner water, and it takes a whole lot less money to protect the water at its source than it does to clean it up where you want to use it. This, these funds are companies, are, um, bottlers like Coca-Cola, are people who want to protect the water. I'm thinking of the people downriver from Jackson on the Grand River who use that water as their water source. We, we were worried about fees here, but there's also a greater cost, and, um, it's too bad that wasn't considered. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Riley. I live here in Jackson. Um, I don't know that we, uh, addressed the streets of the cold patch or the asphalt cement. Um, I've been on the same street for 32, 34 years now. Um, we have yet to see our street fixed. Um, at the west end, it is literally pothole haven, and where I live, it's not as bad, but it's getting worse. So I'm not sure when my street will be fixed, but I certainly would be as a taxpayer for the 34 years that I've lived there and seen no improvements other than the patches that are not holding. Um, I just want to know when I'm next. 727 Glenwood. Thank you.
Peter Bormuth, I wanted to comment on two international issues. Um, first, I noticed that the Germans, um, are going to rearm. This is what Valdemir Putin has created for himself and for us. This is something we tried to prevent ever since the Second World War, although we are now overburdened with the costs of empire, and we want them to share their defense bill. So this is a enormous sea change in American foreign policy. I want everyone to notice that. The other one is, I don't know how many of you know this, but when Nixon took us off the gold standard at Bretton Woods, um, he basically put us on an oil standard. All oil contracts in the world are denominated in dollars. I saw an article today that China has approached Saudi Arabia, and Saudi Arabia is considering denominating oil contracts in yen, yuan. Um, that is essentially the end of the American empire. And finally, I want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day. Uh, he's reputed to have driven all the snakes out of Ireland, but there were no snakes in Ireland. There were just a lot of pagans, and apparently he drove them out, but they have come back. Um, amazingly, uh, all the Irish under 30, 50% of them are no longer Catholics. They don't believe in the Catholic religion, and about 20% of them believe, who, who describe themselves as Catholic, believe in Saint Bridget, who is the old pagan deity bride or Bridget, the goddess Bridget, goddess of wells and poets and other things, and I'm very pleased. And I'm very pleased that she has come back to Ireland. Thank you.
Yep.
Lena from Jackson County again. To support others, I am still very much against these shots and the force of them. I cannot call them vaccines because they're not. Might I point out, it is not the job of any government or any of the three-letter agencies to take care of our health. That decision lies with each person. The movement, the movement we make it up to the government. We are no longer free people. I don't know about some, but for me, I wish to remain only answerable to God above, not to any man. That is the America I wish to be part of, the way of our forefathers found it. Thank you. May God still continue to bless you.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Brown from Summit Township. I just wanted to let you know, I stand behind Putin. He's taking out COVID labs that are making the vaccine over in Ukraine. He's saving children over there. He's taking out bio labs that our government and their government, our government has paid for to make more pandemic, to unleash on us. The people who are saying the Ukrainians are being blown up, they're being killed, it's by their own government. Their government is killing them. Or it's just videotapes from years prior or another war. They have kicked out most of all the news medias because Putin said if you're going to make fake news, you're going to have 15 years in prison. And so he's taken out the bio labs, the COVID vaccine distributors, he's saving kids over there. Ukraine is the highest sex trafficking country in the world. And I was talking to a friend who is Indian, and he said Ukrainian women are in their wedding gowns, and men can go over there and pick them out like in a store and have a wife. And I said, sounds like sex trafficking to me. And he says, well, they're all happy. And I said, you come from a country that has arranged marriages too. So go Putin.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we've arrived at Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Baer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My topic for tonight's, first part is going to be on the ordinance again. It was mentioned about the cost, what would the, what would the cost be of improving the ordinance with my clauses? Whatever that cost is, it's one one-hundredth of the cost of getting the pollution out of the river once you've allowed it to get in. So we are concerned with the small cost of keeping it out. That's just going to result in a humongous cost for getting it out after you let it in. Best management practices, some people need to get on the EPA website, get on their urban runoff page. National management measures, they list best practice, best management practices. They also list poor practices. One of those is no sediment basin at storm sewer inlets. So according to EPA best management practices, our current county practices are in their poor practices list. Check it out on the EPA website. People have also said that the local Eagle staff thought the ordinance was fine without it. Well, I'm in possession of an email from a Matt Konicksky, Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, and he says that the proposed changes should result in environmental benefits. So we are not going to get those environmental benefits now. He said, I think you have a convincing case. So people say, local Eagle people say one thing. I got an email says they're saying the opposite. So I'm confident this will come back to bite us in the end. COVID vaccines and putting information, I want to add, I'm one of the ones that's strongly going to keep pushing for adding things to our county health department website. The vaccine is not the only option, and we have an agency that only lists one side of the argument, one potential option. That's brainwashing. That's coercion. That is not consent. The medical practice is divided on other treatments such as hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin. When I came down with COVID, I took ivermectin. It was great. Dr. Tyson in California has treated over 10,000 patient COVID patients with ivermectin. Not one single death. It's a better record than the, well, they call it a vaccine, it's not a vaccine. A vaccine gives you permanent immunity. They've admitted what they are calling the vaccine is not, does not give you permanent immunity. If you get what they call a vaccine, you can get it, you can transmit it, you can die from it. So I don't call it a vaccine, I call it the Communist China flu shot. And I think our county website has to be fair and impartial, and right now it is totally unfair, it is totally partial, because it only expresses one side of the argument. There are thousands of doctors all over the country that are saying, well, even Dr. Malone, who's the inventor of the mRNA technology, he has stated, don't give it to kids. It's not good for them. So people talk about the medical professionals that have been consulted for the county website. Well, it's only because you haven't consulted a thousand other professionals and allowed them to have their input. So I'm going to be coming back. I'm going to be listing articles that I'm going to be requesting put on the county website. The other side of the story needs to be told, or you're just not being honest. Thanks for listening.
Commissioner Williams?
First and foremost, I want to say again a big thank you to former Commissioner David Elwell for your years of service as a county commissioner. I came on, I was elected in 2018, and I remember we were voting on something, and I don't remember what it was, but it didn't go the way that I thought that it should have gone. And so I was a little upset about it, but it was, and so I just was just packing up my things, and right before I left, Commissioner Elwell said to me, Darius, don't be afraid to ask the tough questions. And that's always stuck with me since 2018, and so I really appreciate you for that and continue to, again, thank you for that, and much success to you in your future endeavors. And secondly, I just also want to mention too, although this isn't really a big issue at all, but it is a matter that I just want to at least speak to. Again, we've had two other commissioners who have, that are no longer serving with us in this capacity as a commissioner, and I believe that if we honor, if we've honored all other commissioners, that we should honor every commissioner that serves regardless of any political differences there may be, or whatever the case may be, whatever the difference is, it doesn't matter. These are individuals who have served, and I think that we should acknowledge their work, whether we've agreed with them or not. They've taken the time to run a campaign, and most importantly, to serve their community. And so I think that we, if we serve, if we honor one, then we should always honor all. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further.
Any other Commissioner comments? We have no closed session? Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, I'd just like to give a quick shout out to Commissioner Elwell as well. Started out, maybe not on the best of terms, once in a while we would disagree, but I learned a lot from you. I really did, and I always appreciated how thorough you were in your research and things that we disagreed on, that you always were respective, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much. In addition, I want to thank everybody for coming out. I think that's an example tonight. Not everybody had the same opinion, but remember that we're all neighbors. Okay? And lastly, since I'm the Irishman on this board, happy St. Patrick's Day. Be safe.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, entertaining a motion to adjourn? All in favor?